Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, December 8th, 2014. It's my pleasure to call the City of Burnsville Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Welcome, Commissioners, staff, welcome. And members of the viewing and listening audience, we welcome you and we appreciate your tuning us in. Tonight's meeting has five items on the agenda as follows. Item one, adoption of the agenda. Item two, approval of the minutes from November 24th, 2014 meeting. Item three, a public hearing, Northern State's Power Company, NSP, conditional use permit amendment to allow grading, filling, road and utility work within the shoreline and floodplain environmental overlay districts of the Minnesota River and the Black Dog Lake at 1400 Black Dog Road. Item four, a work session discussing architectural guidelines. Item five, updates, and then adjournment. Any changes to the agenda, Commissioners? Any addition? Staff? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Two, four, five, zero vote approved, adopted. Next item, approval of the minutes from the November 24th, 2014 meeting. Any changes? Any?
Sure.
Commissioner Benke?
In reading back through the things and watching it back, I think that there were two other points to my comments before the vote that I thought should be on there. Basically, as I'm reading back through them, I had also had issue with the architecture of the buildings, and I also had issue with the parking green space being less than what was required. Also, to clarify, the traffic issues that I had commented on had to do with Burnhaven Drive. So if those could be added, that would...
That's correct. I recall mentioning those.
Right.
Staff can make those adjustments.
Thank you.
Any other changes? Staff, any changes?
No other changes.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Thomas?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Corey. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, pass on a five, zero vote. Item three, it's a public hearing, Northern State's Power Company, conditional use permit amendment to allow grading, filling, road and utility work within the shoreline and floodplain environmental overlay districts of the Minnesota River and Black Dog Lake at 1400 Black Dog Road. Welcome, Ms. Garrus.
Thank you, members of the Commission. We have got several members here this evening from NSP Excel, and they are here, they're all very familiar with the project, and they have been working on many aspects of this cleanup project for several years and with multiple jurisdictions and agencies. One of the last areas that they need to deal with is a conditional use permit from the City of Burnsville, and that's primarily to do the grading and filling work that's needed in order to clean up the site and cap some of the areas where there is coal and coal ash. And we did prepare a very lengthy and technical background. I'm not going to go through all of those details, primarily going to give you the high points, and then if Planning Commission or anyone in the audience has additional comments or questions, we'll have the appropriate folks come up and address those for you. The site is part of the over 1,400 acres of property that is owned by NSP, and it's primarily related to the area of the plant and eastward. And the overhead shows primarily where the, where this general area is. There is, Edic Excel has been working with Minnesota Pollution Control, and they are in process of decommissioning or looking to cease operations, coal operations, at the plant and move to 100% natural gas usage as far as creating electrical generation out of the site. In order to do that, they have worked with a state program through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, also have been working very closely with Department of Natural Resources, U.S. Corps of Engineers, and multiple other jurisdictions to do this. The VIC site, what that's called, it's a program through MPCA, it's a voluntary investigation and cleanup program, and it affects about 72 acres of the site. You can see from the overhead, we're primarily, again, talking about the lands that are located easterly of the main plant facility. And just to give an overview, I think it's a little bit easier for folks to understand kind of a pictorial representation of what's going on. The project site is going to consist of four major areas that we'll talk about tonight. It's going to talk about the coal yard, which is shown on the screen, that's the general area where coal is processed or has been processed over the past 40-plus years. It's also the area where there are some existing buildings and facilities, primarily the stacks that are involved in the coal processing. And in addition to that, there are, there's an ash pond area further to the east, and basically what this does is it takes, these are settling pond areas, and these will all be regraded and closed as part of this project. So we'll be talking about ash pond area, the coal yard, which is all of this area in here. Also be referencing the old discharge channel and the wetland two area, and that is just north of the plant, and it's in this general area of the site. The fourth area that we'll be talking about is the old barge dock, and that is in this area here, right in between the ash ponds and coal yard, located on the Minnesota River. That barge dock is something that used to be used up until the mid-'80s for bringing coal to the site via barge traffic. That ceased in the mid-'80s, and this really has not been used since then. The VIC site also includes the area adjacent to existing Black Dog Road, all the way down to what's known as a cedar gate structure. Planning Commission, you may recall that within the past couple of years, we have done conditional use permits to replace this cedar gate structure. Just for reference purposes, the Cedar Avenue Bridge is in the far corner up here, and this is wetland six, there are a total of six wetlands on site, but when we're referring to areas, just wanted to give you kind of an overview of where these things were so you can get an idea. We've got the Minnesota River generally just north of the site, and then Black Dog Lake is just south of the site. This is another, just overhead, a little bit closer representation, where you can see the wetland number two is in this general area, and this is that vicinity of that old discharge channel that we will be talking about. As far as the project itself, we're really limited here to public hearing for conditional use permit to allow grading and filling within the floodplain district. There are four areas of the site, geographic areas that have been broken down in order to identify various work that's going to happen on the site. The proposal for the closure and the decommissioning, this is a five-year planned process, starting in 2015 going through the year 2020, and different operations will be taking place during that timeframe. In addition, you may recall that we have had some discussions in the past about the city and county working to put a regional trail corridor through this area of Black Dog, and that is actually, that will be a separate conditional use permit that will be submitted here, probably within the next month or so, that Planning Commission will be reviewing. We did include, and what's included on the graphics that you received are the general location for that future trail, which is basically northerly of existing Black Dog Road. Those are for representation purposes only. What we're discussing here tonight is the grading and filling associated with this project and some work that will be done to existing Black Dog Road. As far as the main site, we'll be talking about the north margin, which is generally this area, it's kind of depicted in a blue, and it's this area that is adjacent to the Minnesota River. The coal dock that we refer to is in this location, and the area where we have that former cooling channel is in this general area. This is where the main plant is. Behind this is the operational coal yard, where all of the coal work takes place, and then we've got the four ash ponds that will be basically graded and removed, and there will be a new lined stormwater pond that will be installed in this general area that we'll talk about in a few minutes. The area along Black Dog Road is known as the south, or excuse me, south of the railroad and adjacent to Black Dog Lake is known as the south margin, or will be referred to that. For the majority of the slides that I have, just going to go through these very quickly for purposes, just for the public and Planning Commission to have an idea. Basically, when we're looking at these plan sets, because the area is so long, we have basically three sets of plans for every process, so there's at least three plan sheets related to existing conditions out there, three sheets related to what's going to be removed or demolition plans, three or four sheets related to grading, et cetera. So kind of bear with me here. This particular sheet is showing some of the areas that will be removed as part of the project. We've got the areas just east of the plant, which consist of several buildings, and the large stacks, there are four stacks actually that are out there that are all utilized as part of the coal process, and those will be all coming down within this next five-year timeframe as part of this removals. In addition to that, there are some other demolition that's going to take place in terms of existing Black Dog Road. At the Planning Commission will recall, there was a, the city vacated the right-of-way under Black Dog Road in order to make room for the future trail, and then also for a private service road. We also gave back the public part of that, if you will, through the vacation. So what will occur with this project is basically from the plant to the east, they will be removing existing Black Dog Road, and will be installing primarily a 12-foot wide private drive that will be used solely for the plant in operations. At the very east end, down by that wetland number six and the cedar gate, there will be a gate structure so that only representatives and employees from the plant will be able to get through at that gate structure. There'll be a similar gate structure on the west end also, where the public part of Black Dog Road starts to the private drive for the plant. In this graphic, what I really wanted to show is, again, we've got these major, these are the ash pond areas, all of these will be removed, also all of the, the majority of the infrastructure that's here for these settling ponds will also be capped or removed as part of this project, and this area will be regraded. Along the north margin, some of the things that will be occurring is the removal of this large coal dock area. The floodplain impacts really apply to the floodway for the most part, and that is along the Minnesota River area. And what will happen is because of this coal dock being removed, that really mitigates any of the filling work that needs to be done along the Minnesota River front. So in terms of meeting the FEMA floodplain requirements, they have been able to demonstrate and document that there will be no net increase at all into the floodplain or the floodway associated with the project, and that is a requirement. Whenever we're dealing with floodway, you can't increase the floodway at all, and they do show that. In addition to this, when the city does its trail planning, that CUP will also have to document the same type of information, but it's done under a separate project. There are some tree areas that are located on the site, both on the north and south margin. These are generally volunteer-type growth trees. There will be some removal of trees within the site, but not extensive removal, there are just not extensive tree cover areas in, on the site. This area shows the beginning of the overall grading plan from the western part of the site, and as, as I had indicated, ultimately, a lot of these buildings and structures will be removed. They're basically going to be grading in this area, taking out the ponds, the four ash ponds, and further to the east, there will be a new stormwater pond installed. Just want to make sure I got the right thing. Also, something for Planning Commission to note is that there is a flood berm that is existing on the site that protects the main plant area and where the ash ponds were from flooding. That flood berm will remain in place and will be actually enhanced in some areas so that any of the work that is located within the flood boundary, it can by conditional use, they can add fill to that, and that is not counted against the floodway impacts that I discussed further. So we've got two different areas. We've got the floodway, which is basically the main channel associated with the Minnesota River, and then the floodplain, which is that area within the flood berm parts of the There are a number of wetlands on the site. We'll be talking about wetland two in this general area of the site, and also further, sorry, wetland two, and then there's another wetland that I will show you later. As far as wetland impacts to the site, overall, there are, is very few wetlands that are impacted. There are six wetlands within the entire project site, only three of them will be impacted by the project. The applicant is working with DNR and the city and Corps of Engineers to get their wetland and working waters permits, and we have recommended a condition that those will need to be obtained prior to the applicant being allowed to start to work with any of those public waters and wetlands. In this graphic, this is again more of the grading plan, and what I want to call your attention to is this is where a new lined stormwater pond will be installed, and in this area of the VIC site, basically this stormwater pond will take flow from the main, around the main plant area, and it will be allowed to settle out. There will be a new overflow drain connected, and once, there's also monitoring systems that are installed, and once the ash has settled out in this pond, then the clear water basically will be pumped and discharged back into the Black Dog Lake. This graphic, just showing a little bit again, the, the lower darker line is the 12-foot wide private service drive. North of that is the tentative location for the trail, and the applicant and city are continuing to work out those details for the exact location of the trail and the easements, et cetera. For the wetland impacts, just to quickly note, we're dealing with wetland two in this area, which will include some fill for the project. Wetland number three is a wetland that was created actually as a result of previous work on the floodberms, and this is not actually a naturally occurring wetland, but was created because it was left over from a previous grading project. This entire wetland is proposed to be removed. There's a small wetland on the south side in this location, wetland one, another small one in this location, we've got a couple in through here, and this large one, wetland six, in these locations. The project includes minimal wetland implications. There, some of the documentation for the project, it is pretty complex because MINDI and R and the water, the WACA, which is the Wetlands Conservation Act that the city deals with, involves lands above a certain elevation, and then the Corps of Engineers regulates wetlands and waters below a certain elevation, so there's a lot of different fluctuating conditions that are taking place. But overall, from the city standpoint, from the WACA standpoint, very few impacts. The impacts that are associated will be mitigated with wetland bank credits, and this is currently in the process of being worked through, and will go to our Parks and Natural Resource Commission at their January meeting. These graphics, just go through quickly, these are showing where the actual impacts are occurring and giving you the information. This would be on the riverfront, we've got river impacts shown in yellow, we've got some of the wetland impacts depending on if they're above or below which jurisdiction deals with those, the Corps or if it's WACA, and the actual, this is that large wetland two that we refer to. So there is some impact within that area that's shown. These are showing again very small, minimal impacts along Black Dog Lake, and again, in this area, very minimal wetland impacts as well. This is the part of the grading plan, the reason that I wanted to show this to Planning Commission is this shows the area, generally, the plant location is in this area, and this is where they will be transitioning from existing Black Dog Road and narrowing the road. They'll be actually removing the existing blacktop that's out there recycling it, and then this will transition to that 12-foot private drive for the plant. In this, in the screen, we're just showing again a little bit more detail about the stormwater pond. This will collect basically surface water from around the plant and from the de-watering area that I'll show you in a minute, and basically treated, settled out, and then discharges back into Black Dog Lake. Again, this is just another further, further detail of that. One of the things that will happen as part of the project, it's going to need to be staged over the next five years, there's going to be extensive truck traffic that's occurring out there, both bringing clean fill in and taking the other fill out and any of the coal that's left over that's not burnt by midpoint next year. And that truck traffic really all needs to head westbound towards I-35. The applicant has been made aware that MINDOT is looking to replace the I-35 bridge across the Minnesota River at some point between 2017 and 2020, so that would be during this project site. And the reason that this may be of issue is that the trucks cannot continue on to the east because the City of Eagan has basically put on load restrictions, so no trucking can occur heading out to the east. The applicant has been in discussions with MINDOT, they are aware of that timing of the bridge, and also our city staff has been working with MINDOT to make sure that they know that they do need to leave access open from that Black Dog interchange to 35W even during that bridge project. The site has an area, this is again west of the main plant building, and this is a new, it's a temporary de-watering pad area, about 121,000 square feet, and what this will be used for is there'll be some temporary haul roads that are installed to help with the different phasing and where they're working on the site to be able to remove materials and then bring in the replacement. This site is a de-watering pad and will be, will be the area where as there are dredge spoils or as there's dirt that's taken out, it needs to dry, so they will bring it to this area of the site for processing, it'll dry out, and then they'll be able to remove the material from the site to an off-site location. This is part of the area that will also drain into that new stormwater pond. As far as the, we did find some interesting information out, which Excel was, you know, they've been very nice to the city. This is definitely a joint, joint venture involving the, the trail and Black Dog Road, et cetera. But the city has been basically removing flood debris from Black Dog Road forever, since we were formed, and actually, they've been locating or putting that flood debris in the park, Minnesota Riverfront Park, in order for it to dry out. And just recently, within the past few years, we've actually started to remove that so there's not a continuous pile of, pile of material here. So what we have requested from Excel and what they are looking at is to basically identify as part of the conditional use permit, where two sites can be on the property that both will be used by Excel and the city. One of the items that we have indicated a condition for is for both the city and applicant to work on a future memo of understanding in order to identify specifically how this area and the other area to the east will operate, how long the storage piles can stay there, how they will be protected from erosion and sedimentation, et cetera, and both the city and applicant will need to work on that. And currently, that is being reviewed by our Public Works Department, and I believe they are looking to try to bring that memo of understanding to the city council yet at their next meeting in December. If not, it would be shortly after that. But we have included recommendations for basically identifying how this flood storage area, flood debris storage area would be operated, and then there's a further one on the eastern area. This is an area of the site that currently is just driven over, and because the coal yard is going to be closed and capped, there is a need for the areas that are dredged for the plant operations, for them to have an area where they can, again, put those dredge spoils so that they can dry out and then be, be moved offsite. With that, the recommendation from staff is we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit, subject to, I believe there are 10 conditions, and in those, they relate to, number one, that the final plat will need to be recorded at Dakota County. The Planning Commission will recall, you did process the final plat for this project, and the applicant has been working diligently with the Dakota County Recorder's Office and Surveyor to get the plat recorded. There's a lot of, because it's a large site, very complex site with a lot of easements and things, it's taken a while for the county to be able to get to a point where they are comfortable with the plat as proposed. We are looking to get the MYLARS for that very soon, so this item should be taken care of here within the next couple of weeks. Number two, a wetland and waters permit and the wetland mitigation plan will need to be approved prior to the applicant working in public waters and wetlands of the site. As I indicated earlier, it's anticipated that the, for the wetland mitigation plan, that that will be required at this point. That does need to go to PNRC, and that will go to their first meeting in January. Item three, the temporary haul routes that are proposed to be installed in order to help gain access to the south margin area, and then also for the grading work that needs to take place. And then also for the grading work that needs to take place, that those temporary haul routes need to be restored and replanted when the project ends in 2020. Number four, that the applicant will need to provide written documentation to show that they're meeting flood proofing requirements. This is a requirement out of the FEMA regulations. And we are asking for that documentation to be provided. This is a standard condition for these types of applications. Number five is also a FEMA requirement that we receive as constructed plans once the project is completed. Number six, that as the project is sequenced over the next five years, basically for FEMA, there is a requirement that any mitigating elements that need to be installed, that they're installed prior to work occurring in the floodway. And again, this is a standard condition related to the FEMA requirement. For tree removal, as I indicated, there is some tree removal. The amount of tree removal related to the entire site is small. It's, again, less than 1%. What we do for tree impacts on this property, because it's so large, is with each application that comes in, it's reviewed by our city forester. And we maintain a running total, if you will, of all the tree removals so that we know where they're at with removing trees and any thresholds. This particular project does not require any reforestation or replanting. We are recommending that the condition apply, that tree removal be done during the winter months. Reason for this is there is some indication that there might be some bat species on the property. And if that's the case, to avoid impacting habitat, DNR and the state looks at trying to keep the, the tree removal during the winter months while they're not nesting. Number eight would be that the applicant is anticipating that they may need to have hours of operations that go beyond the standard hours for construction activity. And this is more related to trucking that will be occurring, just because there's so much fill that would be going out of the site and back into the site. This is something that the city engineer has recommended before in other similar applications. But basically, that the city would allow them to work outside the standard hours, but they would need to get approval from the city engineer in order to do that. Number nine is related to those two sites for storage of flood debris and dredge spoils. And this is a condition that the city and applicant enter into or develop a memo of understanding, basically to identify and have in writing an agreement as to how these areas will be used, protected, the responsibility for the storage and the cleanup, et cetera. The last item is item number 10, that both city and Northern State's Power develop a removal plan for all the storage materials that will be in the, actually, this applies to the floodway and not floodplain. This is a requirement of FEMA to have a plan in place that in the event there is a 1% chance flood, that there's a plan in place for how to get those materials out of the site so that we will not have increased impacts of the floodway. With that, I can stand for questions. And as I indicated, the applicant is here. And we can certainly address questions that commissioners might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garrus. That was a very in-depth presentation and a lot of information, I hope. And I know commissioners have seen them paying attention and hopefully have comprehended what you have presented to them. So questions, commissioners, comments?
Commissioner Benke?
Thank you. Deb, can you, most of the things I'm going to ask are mainly just for clarification. The, it looks like the grading plan, the narrative talks about four feet of clean fill, but the grading plan seems to show up to 14 feet of grade change in the areas of the ash pits.
Yes.
Can you explain that just a little bit?
Yes, definitely. This project is a cleanup program. All of the coal is not going to be removed from the site. The, the intent of the program is basically to deal with the coal and the ash in a way so that the public and natural habitat and our surface and groundwater is not impacted by the ash and coal.
Sure.
So what they will be doing is, in some areas, like the south margin, they will be basically doing kind of hand scraping along the shoreline to remove the coal fines there. In other areas of the site, the coal is deeper. It's been used in some cases for fill. So in those areas, there will be removal of the, of the ash and the coal. And in some areas where it's appropriate to allow it to be capped, the VIC requirement is a minimum of four feet of cover. But that is just a minimum. They've actually worked with PCA to identify the extent of those cover areas and what they need to be based on the type of material that is, is going to be capped.
I noticed a number of items are listed as separate contracts. There's some pipe appears to be capped going off, off the project area. Do we know if that's happening before or after this project or is it during?
I'm sorry, for the...
There was, there was a few items on some of the pages that showed pipe mainly going off the project area to the east that talk about being removed under separate contract.
I can, I will let the applicant address that.
Okay. Well, we...
Do you want to, would you like that to be addressed right now?
Sure, sure.
Just come on up and please mention your name and address for the record.
Jeremy Gasnik, Bar Engineering. Would you like Bar Engineering's address?
Go ahead, yes.
Yep, 4700 West 77th Street, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55435.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you for having me, commissioners. If you can point me to a little bit of clarification on which utilities you're talking about or piping, but...
From this map, it was east of here. So it was one of the larger maps. And I just noticed it in one spot. It just, yeah, continue to the east if you can. It's...
Back up here?
Yep. If you look down at the bottom on the right, existing something, facility, the next one to the right there, that one.
Oh, that, the, yes, that is...
French drains and these types of things.
Yep, that's the existing, there's some French drain systems underneath a closed ash storage facility. I'm not sure of the timing.
It's been closed before the judging.
Okay, it'll be closed before the completion of this project.
One of the other maps that shows the storm pond, is the, is the storm pond handling siltation and other runoff conditioning before it's, before it exits into the wetland?
Yes, it is.
Or is that what the storm pond is for?
Yep. So once, once the coal yard areas are all covered and capped and closed down and vegetated, this is a clean water, stormwater pond. It's handling the water not only from the coal yard, but also from around the plant. It does have a multi-staged design with a four bay for initial settling out, and then a permanent pool system that acts as a settling basin. And then a live pool that does have an outlet structure then, that'll be phased over time through a, another drainage well that it doesn't get discharged through Cedar Basin.
Yeah, that actually is labeled as a wetland right at the exit there, not on this map, on another one.
Yes.
That was why I asked the question.
Yep, yeah, well, the pond is designed to kind of settle out all the material before it gets released.
Sure. I guess, I did have another question about the work hours, but I don't know that that's appropriate for the, for the work hours. I guess the concern, I was wondering, does the, does the city engineer then approve the work hours each time the hours need to go beyond normal work hours?
Thank you, yes, for members of the, the commission. Yes, what we would request generally is that the applicant notify the city of when they anticipate those times occurring. And then what we do is advise the police department so that they're aware. And if any calls come in, they are directed to the public works engineer so that he can address those. If we know in enough advanced time, sometimes we can also put information out on the city website.
Sure.
Something that will actually be a nice thing is they are also removing the railroad tracks. So the major noise area or noise concerns that the residents have had have really been related to the trains and train whistles. So this will be a benefit in that respect too, because they're really removing, removing trains from, from the site.
I guess I was surprised, I would have expected they would have asked more questions about the dump trucks with the beepers when they're backing up and moving at all hours. And we know North River Hills is relatively close there.
Yep.
And the river bottoms tend to focus the noise. It appears that some of the project is below the waterline. Is that done when the river is down then or is that done behind piling?
Jeremy Gasnik, Bar Engineering again. Yes, the goal of the plan is this work, at least the north margin work, will be done in 2015, which along the riverfront. We have a lot of groundwater monitoring that's done there. So it's tied, water levels are pretty closely tied to the river level. So the goal is to wait maybe a little till later in, in the fall when river levels are lower to try to do some of those areas so we're not impacting water.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Bradrick?
Ms. Garrus, I have a couple of questions on, on some of the recommendations. And number three, all the temporary haul routes shall be restored and planted. You know, recently, we've had a fair amount of things come in front of us where there's some sort of dollar amount associated. So what, what kind of guarantee does the city have that, that after this thing is completed and with the conditional use permit in 2020, that those routes will be removed? We, you know, we've had several things come in front of us as a body recently where there's been some sort of financial guarantee. And I notice there's nothing in there. Can you educate me on the difference?
Certainly. In this case, we don't have a specific landscape plan. The applicant is still in process of working with the Corps of Engineers and DNR. And really, their permitting is what regulates those details. So that's being handled through a separate permitting process. There will be some erosion control and possibly additional escrows that'll be required when they make application for their grading permit. Correct.
With the memo of understandings, I'm assuming that'll be worked out prior to the city council voting on the CUP? Or how does that, that's kind of new in front of us too with a memo of understanding about, and I realize part of it's the city's responsibility to remove debris, but...
There is an active memo of understanding, if not more than one, that we have, that we have with Excel. And it's just that their operation is so unique. And there are so many things that affect both the city and Excel. So the Public Works Director is working with them. The city council is familiar with these memos of understanding. So we just do not have the specific details worked out at this time, but that is being worked on. And as I understand it, I believe that the memo of understanding will be presented to council at the same meeting as this application. If it is not done at that point, then council, we would recommend that they approve, subject to that memo of understanding being approved and then brought back to council.
I have one last question.
Go ahead.
The stormwater pond, the city's had, recently had some responsibilities for stormwater cleanup ponds on private property. I'm assuming the maintenance, given the, the district, there'll be some requirements. When will maintaining the stormwater pond 20 years from now or 15 years from now when it needs to be cleaned out? Whose responsibility will that be?
Certainly. Actually, the stormwater pond is private for Excel. So they need to continue as part of the VIC program. In addition to just the stormwater pond, there are also numerous well monitoring areas. So they do need to keep those cleaned out. Yep. And again, those are subject to other permits through other agencies. Correct.
Thanks, Ms. Garrus.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Commissioner Bradrick. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might be directed more at the applicant. I'm kind of looking at the fly ash or coal ash ponds. Can you kind of give us a brief summary of how you're going to decommission those ponds? I mean, process? And then what is, what's left when you're done?
Absolutely, thank you. Let me pull that up. Perfect, right here. So there's basically, we have four pond systems. And just to give you a little quick history of operational, it comes in the ash pond, three right here, then it goes to two, then the one. Those are inside the flood broom and then the four before it's tested and released. Pond four will be completely dredged all the way down to native material. So all ash will be removed. This de-watering pad here is for the use of the pond. So the material will be pulled out, stockpiled there, worked, dried out, and then hauled offsite. And then same thing with these three ponds. It'll be excavated down to an elevation to the lower limit of the operational ash material. Stockpiled, de-watered, hauled offsite. This answers a little bit of the question then. Commissioner Benke had brought up about the 14 feet of fill. Since we're not going to leave a big hole in the ground, we're going to fill that back up and then even cap above that so that it grades and drains to the pond or then off the site.
So all ash is going to be removed from the site, then?
No. Operational ash, we've worked with MPDS and the VIC program to remove what was considered operational ash from probably was established in 1950. I don't know if you want to clarify anything more on there in the 70s?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm Al Peterson. I'm an environmental analyst with Xcel Energy. I'm 414 Niklet Mall, Minneapolis. Right, the VIC program was really to look at the risk of the coal and ash that's been on the site since the 1950s. And so that, we spent, worked with them, our last two, three years to have them say that they'll let coal and ash didn't have really any impact of any significance to the environment and to humans. And with a couple of caveats. One is that we had to still follow the requirements of the MPDS permit. These, these ponds were constructed in the 1970s and were permitted in the 1970s. So under that permit, we're required to close those ponds, which means you have to excavate down to the level, the operational level of the ponds as they sat in the 1970s. So that is why in Pond Four, we're going down to native. And then Ponds One, Two, and Three are going back down to what the bottom of those ponds were when they were permitted. And that is also why we're putting that minimum of four-foot soil cover because one of the requirements is to make sure there's no contact between the environment and humans to the coal and ash.
So the capping is fine. How about underneath? What about that pre-operational level? How much coal ash is below that 1970 level? And is that ash, is it sealed underneath? Is there any environmental concerns about leaching? Is it any testing for heavy metals or other contaminants?
Right. We've done testing over this last several years with groundwater wells. And we've shown that basically because of the, there's no impact because the aquifer, there is no drinking water aquifer where this coal and ash is at. The drinking water aquifers are all basically recharging up into the Minnesota River and that. So instead, so it's almost basically a sealing that from that end. And we did a lot of extensive risk assessment to show that the impacts to the surface water were not significant.
To the surface water?
Correct. That's really the only receptor that is there in that area.
So when you're saying it's not significant, I mean, levels of lead, mercury, arsenic?
Right.
Have you got anything to share on those numbers? I mean, we're looking at a, the reason I'm being a little bit cautious about this is, I mean, we're looking at a, a great resource with the Minnesota River Valley. And the Fish and Wildlife Service has got a... And the Fish and Wildlife Service has got a, at their facility and you lease land to them in the Port Snelling State Park down the way in.
So, and that's why I went through a full list of 23 to 30 different chemicals of interest and followed the MPCA protocol for surface water evaluation, risk evaluation of groundwater to the surface water and that we worked through the MPCA VIC to show that the impacts were not significant.
So on that, all the excavated material that you're taking out, do you have a disposal spot for that already?
Yes, for the most part. Most of the disposal of this is primarily the dredging of the ash ponds and that has, will go to the same spot it's gone to and that's at our circle landfill up at our circle generating plant.
Regarding the coal, so you have the same agreement with the coal yard? They're going to excavate the coal to a certain level? Is there consolidated coal underneath that will stay?
Yes, that whole area between the plant and these ash ponds is basically, historically, the areas have been used for coal and ash management since the 1950s. The ash pond, previously they were ash basins that were permitted of all things from 1958 Water Pollution Control Federation, kind of predecessor PCA. So we've always had ash management on site. Clearly, back then was more for preventing it from getting in the navigational channel. So the actual location of the ashes throughout that entire area that we were doing, it's not just in the ponds anymore, it's actually underneath the coal yard too.
Okay.
So we looked at it as the whole areas for impacts.
So your investigations have determined the extent of the coal ash and coal. So how much more is going to be below the operational levels that you'll excavate to?
Well, that's what I'm looking at is roughly down to elevation 690. The coal yard is around 705, roughly 705 and everything's basically ending at around 690.
The excavation at 690?
No, that's where, back in the 1950s, engineers got down to about 690. I think they stopped and that's so basically the fill at this site goes down about 690 throughout that entire area.
So it looks like the ordinary high water is a, help me out here, I can't read that very well.
697.
97, so about seven feet below the ordinary high water level.
Yeah, there's coal and ash that's in the groundwater table, yes.
Yep, yep. And I understand, I mean, from an EPA standpoint, it's not a hazardous material, but you know, from a common sense standpoint, you know, you're concerned about contaminants within the ash.
Right.
Mercury and...
Mercury was really, we didn't really find detectable levels of mercury. Mercury was not the issue. There were some other parameters of all things. I forget some of the ones that actually popped out. It was more based on the surface water screening values of the PCA it set.
Just another question on the bats kind of caught my ear. I mean, was an assessment done? I mean, do we have a threatened species down there or do we know for sure? Is it just assumed?
I'll try on this. This is new. I think it's a new requirement that's still, still has not formerly been issued by the, is it Fish and Wildlife? Right. But it's just, I think, a precaution to basically, if you do it in the winter time, you have less impact with the bat population. So, and we're fine with that. We can work through that.
So last question is the land you leased to the Fish and Wildlife Service. Is there any agenda, future agenda for that land? Are you going to turn it back or sell it back or?
I think it's, it's pretty much status quo. We've worked with the Fish and Wildlife with this VIC project. We've kept them in the loop on what our plans are. I think they're accepting of that. There's a little bit of, we have to do some cover areas in that south margin that Deb mentioned. Otherwise, we're pretty much leaving that leased area alone and I think it's going to stay that way. We're working with the city and the bike trail to allow access to the areas as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Back to Commissioner, Beck, Benke?
I guess to follow up just a little bit with Paul here, do we know what the final look of these disgrated area is going to be? Is it going to be prairie grass? Is it going to be, how's it, how's it going to be left when it's complete?
It's a mix of different materials and as I said, it's really up to the other agencies to regulate that. But primarily, yeah, primarily that's what they will be looking at are the, in the wetland areas, the native wetland type plantings and then native grasses on the, on the other areas of the site.
Okay. Deb, as long as you're back, just two questions for clarification. Under recommendation two, talks about wetland waters permits. Are these coming from us or are they from other LGUs?
The wetland and waters permits, that is through Department of Natural Resources, I believe Corps of Engineers. The wetland mitigation plan, that is something that the city is involved in. That is some, that is an item that will go to Parks and Natural Resources Commission.
I guess reading it, I was curious if there needed to be some verbiage that might discuss that or not. I'm just observing.
This is what is recommended from our natural resources department.
Very good. And then under four, you'd mentioned a FEMA reference, so unless the RFPE acronym covers that, I was curious if we should be referring to that and whether or not if the FEMA requirements change, would that come back and change how they're handling the certification?
No, actually, the city updated its flood requirements and flood ordinance here back in 2011. So this is taken almost verbatim right out of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other comments?
I have just a couple. Deb, I want to revisit a concern that Commissioner Bradrick had about condition three. All of the temporary and haul routes shall be restored and planted by 2020 project completion date. Oftentimes, we have disagreement as to what is the completion, the restoration. The applicant can say, we have restored. The city will say, not to our satisfaction. Can we wordsmith something in there and say to the satisfaction of the city or something like that?
I don't think so and the reason being is again, because it's really something that is related to other agencies that regulate it. So what we're looking at is there are notes in the plans. All of the plan sheets did not get sent to planning commission, their 34 sheets, but there are notes within that and they follow what the Corps of Engineers and the DNR wants to see. So I don't believe that there's any need to modify condition three.
I trust staff, once you're satisfied that the language in there will protect the city, so thank you. One other point is tree restoration. You did say that some trees were removed, but I didn't catch the, if there's any restoration to mitigate the loss or is that being taken care of by other agency?
The amount of tree removal that's proposed with the project, we have worked with the city forester and what we do is every time there is a project down there, because they have 1,400 acres, there are thousands and thousands of trees that they have. So what the city has done is when there are various projects or permits that come in, our city forester works with Excel. They identify what the tree removal area is going to be in those valuations and we keep a running total of that. At this point in time, with all the projects that we have reviewed in the past 30 years, they are still only at 1% tree removal. So they have opportunity to, you know, get up to 30, 40% before they would have to do restoration specifically. And the trees also that are located out there are the cottonwoods and elms and those types of species, so there really is not much for hardwood type cover trees.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last point would be, I know you guys are regulated by more agencies than you'd want to talk about, but can you give us a little comfort and explain to us what you will be required to do once this project is complete as far as future monitoring and what assurances are in place to make sure that happens and if things go wrong, what will be done?
I think one thing we forgot to mention that along with the risk evaluation phase two, you know, we had to go through a full response action plan approval process. So what we have right now is approved response action plan and also along with that, an approved long-term monitoring plan. So what that means is that we're, we're under the voluntary program required to complete that response action plan, which in your case becomes the grading plan, that soil cover, move all of the ash and the ash ponds. And then after that implementation, then we're expected to post wrap monitoring to show that the conditions that we had modeled before either were, either better or stable as they call it, the same and to show that there's been no negative impact. And so between two to three years after the response action plan is implemented around 2023, typically then PCA will look at that data and if that is, still shows an improvement or stable conditions, they'll pay, give us a no action letter. After that, you're still on the hook or required to maintain those cover systems. So our rip rap, riverbank stabilization that we proposed and the soil cover, all will be required to be maintained.
Thank you.
Before you leave, staff are recommending 10 conditions as you see. That, are you comfortable with the 10 or you have any suggestions? If you're okay with them, that's fine.
Yes, no, we're comfortable these, we worked with Deb and we're comfortable with these conditions.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Commissioners, this application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this application, please feel free to do so right now. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Commissioners, over to you. Any other discussion? I know we've had questions asked and answers given. Any other, Commissioner Bradrick?
Commissioner, I would be willing to make a motion if there's no need for any other.
I think we're...
Okay. I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would move that the planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit to allow Northern State's power to grade and fill within the shoreline and floodplain districts to complete the VIC program, work subject to the 10 conditions listed in our, in our background.
Motion by Commissioner Bradrick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Corey. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five votes for, those against, none. Pass on a five zero vote. This matter will go to the city council on their agenda Tuesday, December 16th. Thank you for working so well with staff. We appreciate it and good luck. Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is item four. It's a work session, discussion of the architectural guideline for us. And I think Mr. Chris Slenia will lead us on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to give just a brief introduction and make sure we've got the right images up Al Bricksius with Northwest Associated Consultants is here. I was going to walk through some images, some discussion points that we'd like to cover. Let me step back and just give you a little bit of history. This is stemming from a council, city council and planning commission work session back in September. It was September 9th. Direction at that time was given to staff to create, to formulate, the term used at that time was architectural review guidelines that would be a tool for planning staff, the planning commission, the city council to review architectural aspects of land use projects. The intent was really to increase the purview and the responsibility of the planning to commission to get at items that may be of concern or items that are beneficial as part of a project and be able to articulate what those are and just have a more in-depth discussion. This is going to take some time, which is why we brought Al on board. There's going to be a number of meetings involved with that. I'll just cover those just to give you a brief snapshot of where we're going. We're going to look at the Burnsville, the city's current standards tonight and we're going to look at some images of more recent projects and older projects we've done, what went well, what didn't go well. Based on those comments, Al and his team and staff are going to try to formulate some guidelines to help drive discussion in the future. We'll be back to the planning commission January 12th and then back to the city council also in January to catch up and see where we are. If we're on the right track, great. If we're not, there'll be some more tweaking and some adjustments done with that. So there is no formal action needed by the planning commission tonight. We're open to a good dialogue. Al's got some great points and some great examples, some sections of the ordinance that the planning commission may not be aware of that we do address and we'll see where the discussion goes from there. Thank you, Al. It's all yours.
Thank you, Chris and Al. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners. Starting off, when Jenny first contacted me and, first of all, Jane contacted me and asked me if we knew, had examples of design guidelines and NEC has prepared these for a number of communities. We've done them for historic downtowns based on the historic architecture. We've done them for other cities. But upon sending it, I also looked at your code and I asked Jenny, I says, Jenny, quite frankly, your performance standards, both for building appearance, construction, site design, in most cases go far beyond the guidelines that I've seen in other communities. And so that's why the starting point tonight is making you as planning commissioners aware of the full extent of the regulations you currently have in place. Additionally, Chris and I spoke just today and one of the things we want to move away from is guidelines because most of your performance standards are adopted zoning guidelines, not, excuse me, guidelines, regulations. They're adopted as law. They are mandatory, they're not optional. We don't have a lot of discretion in their application. If someone does not want to comply with it, they need to pursue a zoning variance. In that respect, it's not guidelines any longer. These are zoning changes that we're talking about. To begin with, you're asked to take a look at our guidelines and tell us if they're adequate and achieve the goals that you want for your community and each community will be different in what they're trying to achieve. But when we talk about these performance standards, we're generally trying to accomplish the following things. We're trying to get high-quality durable buildings, durable buildings that will last the test of time, so they're not, they don't show deterioration, they are standard, they will look good, not upon, not just upon the first construction, but 20 years from now, they'll still have architectural integrity and attractive appearance. Guidelines that we've set up for architecture go beyond building code and are generally focusing on aesthetics, how does the building look? How do we avoid flat walls that are long, monotonous and not very appealing? Or they may be reflective of a specific area of the community. In the case of Burnsville, HOC, heart of the city area, has, goes even beyond your general performance standards as far as building types, construction, design, details. It gets very integrated as far as right down to entryway appearances and, and one of my other communities at one point in time, I swear, we were looking at the types of hardware that they use for our door openings. So saying that, I want to caution you in how you look at this because I think there's certain cautions that I, I try to give my clients before we get too deeply involved with this. One is that in establishing architectural guidelines that are too rigorous, you may actually discourage architectural innovation or creativity and as such, you want to keep your guidelines or your standards somewhat broad so that an individual architect working on a project doesn't make everything look the same. Secondly... look the same. Secondly, and that builds on it, how do we avoid a monotonous, continuous look, building to building to building so that our standards become so rigorous that each building starts looking alike? I had an instance where one of my council members in another community finally said, could we just get a different color on the next building? Because everything was a very attractive, a red brick, but all of them looked the same. The second element that I want to say is that when we talk about rigorous architectural standards, I don't think Burnsville has this issue because you're the place to be. But in some of my smaller communities, you come, become too rigorous in your architecture, they may just look to go someplace else and place either a building that you may want or a use that you may want in your community. And the final point I'd like to make is currently you have standards for both commercial and industrial. It's important to recognize that industrial has a different use and character than your commercial area. You're not inviting customers to that area. You're not trying to make it an exciting shopping experience. Industrial areas are, need to have an industrial function and they may not need all the bells and whistles that you want in your high-traffic, high-profile commercial areas. That being said, just starting with your areas, within your districts, you have general provisions that address parking, standards, site design, et cetera. You have a section 1019 and a 1023 which set up specific performance standards for your commercial business districts as well, 1023 addresses your industrial districts. You have 1022B, which is your heart of the city, which is even more rigorous than your general provisions. Just in the last couple of years, I assisted you in putting together something for the signs in 1030, which is fairly detailed and goes into a lot of description as to types of signs, et cetera. And then 1030A, and you'll notice in the book that I prepared for you tonight, and it is a book because it's 20, 73 pages, the largest section that you have is landscaping. You have a very extensive landscape requirements. So you'll note that in all 23, there's two pages of maybe discussion points and there's only like five discussion points. So I don't have a lot. So I'm looking for the planning commission to give me feedback on how we proceed on this. Generally, when we talk about building design, we fall into the following categories. Facade treatment, those facades, sometimes we talk about four-sided architecture. Most times we are most concerned with those sides of the building that face a public street or a public or pedestrian way. Ground level expression, how does the customer approaching the building feel as far as on the pedestrian level? Roof design, building materials and signs. In your facades, areas that we're talking about, in the book that we provided you, the facade treatments are identified on pages five through nine. Within the sign portion of the code, 1030, we have illuminated architectural features which are exempted from signs but are encouraged and allowed for buildings. So we do allow illumination, lighting and those type of things to be in architectural accent. When we get into 1019 and 1023, we have architectural accent materials which asks for an accent materials to be included as part of the overall facade. We have visual relief that addresses both historic or, excuse me, not historic, horizontal and vertical features. For every 100 feet of length, we ask for some change in texture, material inundation horizontally. We talk about parapet walls. We talked about roof designs. We have other features. The design elements that we have, we require four design elements and that might include accent materials for all walls facing a street, 40% building cover or window coverage for those first floors facing a street, combination of vertical and horizontal architectural accents. These are pretty generally described, but it's there and requires that to be incorporated into any building design that we're looking at. The H O C has its own performance standards that even goes beyond that, including dividing the architectural, dividing the architectural or exterior materials, 60%, 30%, 10%. So we even ask for variation in the materials in the H O C. We ask for horizontal breakups, four-foot depths, separations. We have vertical treatments that we are asking for, undulating roof designs, four-foot breakups. We ask for first four entryway treatments and window treatments. When we look at that, some of the quality design, you look at the upper left-hand corner, we have the entryway, we have the very materials, we have the treatment of windows, we have the undulation of the facade. Each of those are the qualities that have been asked for and spoken to. You look at the C V S on a smaller scale. You have a base, you have the windows as the middle treatment. You use the E F I S and sign with the parapet walls and the cornice as a way of establishing those different levels. Our poorer designs, and I talked with Chris today because I believe the industrial one is unfairly treated because I believe that was constructed before we had these standards. And actually, you know, the undulation or ribbing would provide that separation in most cases. And then we have the larger box retail in the lower right-hand side. Some of the things that you see here, they've attempted to address your standards by change of color, the accent line, the windows, but it doesn't go far enough as far as breaking up that walls. You have large massing and there's things that can be done to improve that situation. We talk about ground level expression. Generally, we get into entryways, window designs, common areas. In the mixed, we did, we did that mixed-use zoning district and we have that adopted. And that went further, but the mixed-use district includes commercial and residential. So when you talk about common areas, we're setting areas that can be jointly used between the living and the areas and the shopping, nice environments, those type of features. That may be something that we want to look at bringing forward and asking for more of that in some of the commercial areas. Quality design, again, as far as ground level, you look at the awnings and the window treatments and C V S. And I want to be, I'm very complimentary of your Walmart because I have Walmarts in my other communities that don't look nearly this. And in my hometown of Maple Grove, which you expect a higher performance standard, we don't have the treatments that you have here. Again, I think the lower industrial ones, we have to ask the question, is it really necessary in those industrial areas? Because they serve a different function. They have, they're more utilitarian and for more functional in that respect. Roof design, currently with the city, Burnsville has performance standards that dictate what the built roof materials can be, that they have parapet wall requirements. And some of the parapet wall requirements include design details such as height, awnings, vertical wall treatments. If the parapet wall goes above the roof, we have vertical breakups of those corner units, corner designs, those type of features. In the B2, in the H O C district, we dictate based on the building and its location that it's going to be a hip roof or a mansard roof design in some locations. So we've gone that far. Rooftop equipment is a big issue and you can see the difference between the industrial, whether it's industrial or commercial, if it's rooftop equipment and ground equipment can be very unsightly and there's room for improvements in those areas. We currently have requirements on rooftop equipment in our performance standards, 1019 and 1023, and that dictates location, screening, sightlines from a specific location across the street. I think that your standards are pretty solid in that respect. With regard to building materials, again, we have the accent material requirement. And in that respect, that we may, there may be room to basically identify or specifically identify the type of accent materials you'd like. We have a requirement for complementary colors. That specific provision is, says just that, complementary colors. That's a difficult zoning requirement because it's not very measurable. And what may be complementary to me might be different to you and so there might be some arguments. But colors, I'm a proponent of allowing additional colors. I don't know what your feelings are on it, but I think colors, even contrasting colors provide some accent and opportunities and that might be in the signage. The major exterior materials, one of the things in looking at your code requirement is you have provision that identify what's allowed as major exterior materials, including face brick, stone, glass, stucco, synthetic stucco, fiber, cement panels, architectural concrete, precast. For the E F I S or artificial stucco, we do not allow it to go to the base. We have a 24-foot, 24-inch base requirement that has to be included. But those are your materials. If you go back to the, let me just go back, go ahead once, maybe I have an example. You go back to the large box retail. I believe those materials all look to be the same material, but it's just different colors. One of the things that you could do is you could incorporate something similar to what you have in the H O C that requires some mixture of major exterior materials, 60%, 30%, maybe 10% of it being accent materials. Those are some of the things. When we talk about restricted materials, you have a list of restricted materials, but you do also allow an exception for the use of those restricted materials by P U D, C U P. And then the H O, H O C materials, again, one of the things that we have in the H O C is we have a requirement that you can't just use one material. You have to use 60% primary, 30% secondary, 10% accent. And that might be something that you would like to look at. The Walmart here provides variation of materials, variation of colors, variation in depth of materials. We have the restaurant here, which has the restaurant that we, what's the restaurant again, please?
Porter Creek.
Chris and I talked about this. When you have Porter Creek come in and they want to create an environment, that architect's going to create that environment and it's, and he was very successful. When you talk about shopping centers, you seldom get that level of detail and environment. So Porter Creek is going to be a difficult one to say that, well, we want everything to look like Porter Creek. So I think it's reflective on the type of use and what we're dealing with. The lower materials, you see, you see what it looks like when you have all one wall, little variation in color, little variation in how those things are addressed. The signs, the signs in chapter 1030, you have requirements that you do not, you have required mounted letter signs. You don't allow cabinet signs. You have specifics on sign construction, the number of signs, wall signs, location signs and size. We have provisions that outline how much window signage can be done. And we also have a provision that if you're going to do any exception of that, you could do a comprehensive sign plan, but that's reviewed and approved by the overall city. As far as freestanding signs, again, we've gone through monument sign requirements and pylon sign requirements, size, height, location. And then we also have the dynamic sign information that we've included in your requirements. You can see how signage really can lend to both the site as well as identify the business, the contrasting colors, the letters versus the lower designs where we get the box. And in some cases with this Parkway warehouse, it's even harder to distinguish who the tenants actually are. Before I go to the architectural guidelines, I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the, based on our review, some of the discussion points we want to make sure that we raised you. I don't have a lot of discussion points for you because I think you have a fairly thorough plan. A couple of things that I, based on discussion with staff that we talked about is maybe defining what acceptable, what are acceptable accent materials. In some cases, we had Jared's Jewelry Facility in the community that used a plastic panels and that may or may not be something that you're looking for as being an acceptable, attractive material. As far as visual relief, we could perhaps look at expanding the performance standards outlined in your parapet walls. Your parapet wall description has more guidelines than your standard wall description. And I think they're relatively good. Requiring recessed or projected windows, awnings or canopies, vertical wall treatments extending from a facade, creating variations in facade depths, using columns or corner treatments, just with a change of material. That's pretty simple. It's not a difficult component. Horizontal treatments such as cornices, lentils, color bands to provide some facade depth and to divide the building height. When we talk about building height, we generally like to talk about base, middle and height and the top. And in defining those, you break up the building in a vertical fashion. In the mixed use, in the mixed-use district, we have vertical equipment to all industrial, commercial. In our mixed-use areas, we have some very specific requirements for screening of rooftop equipment. And that would not be difficult to bring forward to your general provisions. And then number five, one of my suggestions is to require a combination of major exterior materials, at least those portions of building facing the street. I don't know if you need it four-sided unless it's a integrated within a larger shopping complex where all four sides might be exposed to either parking or a street. But at least those facades that are visible from the street, maybe we ask for additional attention to those. As far as restricted materials, this is kind of a replica of number one. Restricting materials may be expanded to include lesser desirable accent materials, vinyl or plastic materials. I use those as examples. You may feel that they're acceptable. If that's the case, then I'm not going to step on anyone's toes. And one of my other communities, I had an architect that said, we want to keep it open to as many materials as possible, at least as far as accent materials. So. And then I wrote down one more as I was waiting. We may want to give some attention. We encourage awnings, we encourage canopies, but we don't have any mandate or requirement for those. Those are also something that you may want to look at. And it may be a situation where it's incentive-based rather than a requirement for everyone. Okay. The next section I'll go through quickly is site design and then we'll open up for some discussion. When we talk about site design, we talk about building placement, we talk about parking areas, we talk about pedestrian corridors and connections, common spaces, landscaping, exterior lighting. Building placement, I don't have anything really to show you here. Generally, our building placement is dictated by ordinance to meet setbacks. And gives, within that building envelope, the developer has the latitude to locate the building anywhere in that building envelope. And that's, in the case of the H O C, we have a build-to line. We wanted the buildings to be closer to the street. We have a minimum and maximum setback. Elsewhere, I don't know if that build-to line would be prudent for you because we have the major freeways and highways and that setback. And quite frankly, not everyone wants to build on, right on the street. Parking areas. Parking areas. Your parking design requirements are pretty thorough. You have your stall dimensions and driveway dimensions. These are pretty standard. They are consistent with everyone else I work with. You have surfacing requirements, you have signs and pavement marking to establish the stalls, curbing, lighting, and you even have a provision in your ordinance that stipulates you have to demonstrate snow storage. More and more, my clients are starting to do that. I mean, they're saying, we got to recognize that we're going to lose 30% of our parking if we get a heavy snow, so those type of features. Your parking lot landscaping is probably more thorough than most of the communities I work for. You have perimeter landscaping, you have landscape islands, you have heat reduction, you have buffer yards, you have alternative landscape options, swales that can be incorporated into a, so it's a stormwater and landscape feature in your parking lots. In that respect, I think you have a very strong ordinance in those areas. And it's reflected in some of the more contemporary designs that you've approved. The quality design, including Walmart, where you have the internal parking lot landscape areas. And the poor examples where we have the sea of asphalt, nothing is interrupted from the edge of the pavement right up to the building. The big boxes are, you're going to see that over and over.
Easy target.
Yes, it was. The pedestrian and bicycle elements, with the city being more and more focused on pedestrian and bi, and multimodal transportation, these areas are things that I think we should be looking at and incorporating. Generally, in our parking requirements, we have the general pedestrian and corridors and connections. If we have a public sidewalk, or we should plan on bringing that connection up to the entrance to the building in some fashion. And it may be through a center island, or it might be, or a parking lot island, or something to that effect. Those are some of the things that more and more of my communities have looked at. In the mixed use district, when we set this up, we already addressed those elements, walkways through the parking lots, bicycle parking, pedestrian furniture and common space. The other element that we may want to give special attention to is establishing a bicycle parking component. If we're serious about promoting that, then establishing it, establishing some ratio for some bike racks or parking for a commercial enterprise is not unusual and is not difficult. And quite frankly, if you set the ratio right, it's not going to be a great burden to any With the quality design, you can see the building relationship to the public sidewalks. You can see the parking lot areas. With the parking lot, we also have seating areas and pedestrian ways of common open space. The lower design, again, is an older building where the parking pretty much consumes most of the area. The pedestrian way is only in front of the building, and the parking is right up to the front door. In the lower right-hand side, the thing that, the feature that I want to point out here is that we do have a transit station there, right there, that may be serving this area, but there's no way to get back through to the entryway without walking through either snow or the parking lot. The common spaces, we don't generally mandate common spaces in our commercial areas. They're voluntary. In the mixed district, we established a performance standards of 100 square, 500 square feet per 10,000 square feet of floor area, but only in the mixed district. We do have outdoor dining provisions. I think the, I looked at the rules. I think they're, they're well-established and pertinent. We have HOC outdoor dining. But you can see what it offers as far as those treatments. Again, we have the restaurant area. The restaurant would be a premier in any community. I don't think, you know, they set a theme, they knew what they wanted, they wanted that environment for their customers, and they established it through their architecture, through their outdoor areas, through their landscaping. I would be, as far as the common areas, imposing that as a requirement, I think we want to be a little bit cautious because if it, if it would not, you want it to be designed into the site, you don't want it to be an afterthought, and you don't want to take away from some of the other functions of the building. So how we approach that is something that we should discuss. Again, as landscaping, I think I, in my report, I have 19 pages of landscaping. Your landscaping ordinance is excellent. And I say that because we not only require a landscape plan that shows us location, number, size and species, we have minimum size of plantings, we have specific performance standards for buffer areas, we have specific performance standards for perimeter, building perimeter. One of the things that was, one of your previous meetings was discussion, asked whether that primer building landscape was sufficient or how it should be addressed. Again, where we put this landscaping is, you know, it should be in the areas that are, it's going to make the best good as far as adding to the aesthetics of the site. Don't need, unless you're screening the loading dock, we don't need it on that side of the building. We have heat reduction, we have parking lots landscaping, including screening at the periphery, parking lot islands. We have alternative landscaping, you know, the rain gardens, bio-retention, lakescaping, landscaping with native species, even green roofs. We have for each district, a specific requirement for green space that has to be included and left in a green fashion. And some of the quality stuff that we look at, again, the restaurant is CVS, Walgreens, and in the industry, this was, this one missed, just missed. When you have a building that is as tall as the industry and you only plant U's at the bottom, it's really, it doesn't break up that building massing at all. But within the book, you can see where we have some other landscaping where, I believe the white industrial building, they had a lot of mature evergreens that broke up that building massing, and that may, may serve us just as well as having those architectural features for the industrial areas. Your lighting requirements, we have standards as far as all lighting has to be shielded, downlighting. We have specific performance standards for the HOC. We prohibit nuisance glare. A lot of my communities have gone beyond that, stipulate 90-degree cutoff, hidden luminaries similar to a shielded light source. But we've also stipulated that, you know, across the parking lot, we want to have a certain level of light safety at the edge of property lines. We want to have a certain level of lights to avoid glare and issues as far as nuisance glare. At entryways, it might be a little brighter, those type of features. And the other thing that was not in yours, that some, my other communities did that is, there may be some decorative or theme lighting associated with a specific use that may have an exposed luminary. But instead of being a luminary, it might be a frosted bulb, it might be a LED, so it's not as bright, but it adds the ambiance of maybe a restaurant or an outdoor dining area. Again, in looking at your performance, design standards, performance standards, a couple of things that I looked at, again, discussion points. For parking lot designs, you may choose to establish minimum light levels for parking lot sidewalks or building entryways. This is less aesthetic and more just a safety component. We have the park, bicycle parking in your mixed use district, but we don't have it for the commercial. That's something that you may want to bring forward. The mixed district has requirements for establishments of public spaces, plazas, seating areas. You may consider extending that to other commercial areas. I don't know if it would be necessary for your industrial areas. Again, it's not someplace we're inviting people into. As far as lighting requirements, it might be a situation where you would like to at least look at maybe decorative lighting for those type of, in some cases. With that, I'll ask the planning commission to give me your feedback so we know what to do next.
Thank you, Mr. Bricks. You have done your homework on your presentation. We thank you. I know you're looking for feedback now from commissioners, and so I open up to you, commissioners. Commissioner Thomas, you'll start us off.
Well, probably from 10,000 feet too. So these are noted as guideline inventory, but in fact, they are ordinances, right?
That's correct.
So from a procedural point of view, just to be clear, you're suggesting that we make them guidelines instead of performance?
No, I think, I think your, your ordinances are there. I think it's important to recognize that these are mandatory. So I think, in a nutshell, I think you have really solid performance standards. I think there's, there's ways of achieving other things. One thing I neglected to mention, and Chris and I, and Jenny and Deb talked about this, more and more your commercial elements are coming through as plan unit developments. I think if you left your current standards as they are, but stipulated that if you want a performance standards and flexibility, maybe we gear you up to this second level of architectural standards or identify some of these performance standards more specifically, such as the 60, 30, 10% on building materials, such as additional landscape requirements, you know. And then in exchange for the flexibility to the developer, the city's being rewarded with maybe a, a few additional amenities, common open space. But no, I'm not suggesting that we change these from.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. So the flexibility part of it, where in fact, both, both parties are incentivized. The city gets a little higher standard, developer gets something under the PUD process. Do we need to, how would you say it? Do we need to address that some way in the ordinance where, you know, what, explain what that really means? I mean, what?
If that would be what you're agreeable, I think the, I've been thinking about how we would structure that within the PUD, either administration or within the PUD district itself, we would basically stipulate that in exchange for the flexibilities that are offered within the PUD, these following standards would apply, commercial, industrial, and we've set some additional performance standards. That would be the only portion of the plan we really have to change. If you agree that some of these ideas should be more city broad, then we should maybe amend the specific, either the section 1019 or 1023, depending on which, and then maybe add a few of those things. Maybe under general provisions, under lighting, we add a few things. But otherwise, I think the more restrictive stuff, I think we would basically apply through the PUD or have.
Commissioner Thomas, Mr. Bricks, if we do that, would that limit the flexibility of the city council?
Well, I think the circumstances are is that the challenge that you face right now is the PUD is used to basically get flexibility from your base district. And while there's some, certain measures, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Is it, does it beat the general performance standards of the district? There's always a question of, are we giving away more than what we're getting? And that's the question. And so, yes, you're taking away some of the flexibility on maybe some of the architectural components, but if they're looking for flexibility in number of parking stalls or other things, I think it's a situation where we're just trying to balance what we're, what we're getting versus what we're receiving.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Yes, Commissioner.
Excuse me.
Banky.
Wouldn't you think that the whole reason that city council asked us to look at this is to try and answer some of these questions before it gets to them?
Yes.
As opposed to, as opposed to taking away from their look at the architecture?
Yes, but at the same time, we all know that city councils love to have some flexibility. And I, you know, I've been on their side of the, of the table, and so I bring my experience and just, I just raise the question whether.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sleni?
Commissioner Banky, you raise a good point. I think that's part of what we're trying to grasp as what is this end product that we're going to get. Staff has our own ideas, the council may have their own ideas, so does the planning commission. What, what we could get out of this is, I hate to use the word scorecard or worksheet or something like that, but, but a tool that staff can use early on that we can make sure we spell out more clearly in our reports to you, our presentations as a planning commission and council. We already spell out what they're asking for, now we can spell out what the planning, or what the developer is, is giving. No, there are times where that may also be too late in the process. But from the council, from that work session, I think there was also direction to try not to avoid, or try to avoid elongating that process too.
Right, absolutely.
And so it is, as I said, it's kind of a work in progress. But your point's valid.
Are you through?
No, I was actually looking back to.
Oh, you mean?
Yeah, it's you had more.
Well, just to continue on that point, I mean, under the PUD process, to have those enhanced standards, I mean, and it goes back to what you said, I think that's a great idea in some form. I mean, tools in the toolbox for both you and the developer and the city, staff, city, and I think that's what we have to work towards. And if we have more tools, we can find better fits, you know, for whatever the project is.
You know, I agree to what Commissioner Thomas is saying, and that gives all of us the flexibility. As the planning commission, the media recommendation that the city council, staff make recommendation to us, and the city council makes a final decision. But they have, the tools are in the box, they can use whatever tools they want. And you, the result is a win-win for the city and, and the applicant.
Yes.
And that's what our, our goal is really.
In setting it up under the PUD, it could be similar to what we state in our current provision. Maybe we provide a laundry list of amenities and say, if you want the PUD, select four of these and work them into your plan. So it's not a mandate, but they could choose, give them the flexibility to choose amongst some of the things that we want. Maybe it's a common space, maybe it's a plaza, maybe it's a more attractive entryway, maybe it's variation in building materials. The one thing, again, I started off, I don't, I don't really want you to adopt something that's so rigid that you get everything below the same, or discourage something that might be really novel for the city. So you want to give the, the building designer some flexibility and latitude in what they're choosing too.
So on that note, I mean, we give them the latitude to choose these things. So how do we balance that against what the deviations they're requesting?
So the way I would, if I was going to set something up like that, is maybe we make a laundry list, and maybe the list is 10 items that they can choose from, and they have to incorporate four of them into their site design. And it might be, we would like a common area with plaza or public art, maybe it's variations in building materials again. I'm trying to, I'm running out of ideas, so guys jump in.
Well, understanding that part of it, but.
Then they can pick and choose and balance what fits best for what they need to do.
But what does staff say? They come in, they want a 50% reduction in parking. Well, that's ridiculous, but then they say, well, I'd pick six instead of four. I mean, can we balance, what does the staff have?
Part of, that's part of our negotiations, that's part of the process to balance what they're asking versus the reasonableness and the benefit.
Can we, I mean.
And sometimes we'll say, no. And sometimes we'll say, no, try again. We're not ready to go to the planning commission. Sometimes we'll say, well, we're, we're this close. Let's see what the planning commission says, or, you know? I think it's gonna put us in, again, maybe what the council's looking for, it'll put us in more of a discussion mode between the planning commission and the developer, rather than just, here's the recommendation, let's act on it.
Another thing, one of my other cities has done is they, they went cut with guidelines, but they have a checklist for each one of the things they want. They meet this, they meet this, close, you know? And so, and that's offered as part of our, our planning commission package, so that it shows our planning commission that we actually reviewed it against all those guidelines, but it wasn't detailed in each report as far as, did they use brass awnings or if they used, you know, just as we've looked at.
Commissioner Benke?
It's okay, Paul.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if there's an answer to what I was asking. I mean.
Right.
But it puts staff in a tough negotiating position. I mean, so, one guy gets this for whatever reason. Maybe it's a more desirable project, hopefully not, but the next guy comes along and says, I want the same thing, but it doesn't really fit. I'd just be, I mean, I'm an engineer, so I mean, like to quantify everything, but it'd be nice if you could say, we'll deviate from the performance standards in the zoning districts by this percent. Or in some fashion, if you provide these enhanced architectural.
You understand right now, without any of these performances, that we're, we're in that position right now. Someone comes in, someone comes in, a planning and development will, will come in and they'll say, well, within, we want this site. We wanna do this. Here's our building. How do I fit this on that site? And then they say, well, we need these flexibilities. Then we, we as staff say, it functions, it doesn't function, it didn't meet, doesn't meet our guidelines, it's too far off, or yes, we can make it work. But with some additional enhancements as far as maybe some of the building components, we can say, well, we're not gonna give you anything unless we see a nicer building. So, regardless of we, whether we make any changes to your architectural performance standards or not, the PUD process is the PUD process, and it's intended to be that negotiation and a more flexible element. We're just saying that if you give us, if you ask, if you say, we want a little bit more in exchange for those flexibilities, then we have the power to say, we need this, 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 and this, if you want any kind of latitude.
You still, Commissioner Thomas?
I'm true.
Commissioner Benke?
All right, I come at it from, you know, sort of the same end as, as Paul, but then some others here too. And I, I'm almost, a lot of what I'm gonna say might bounce around a little bit. I'm gonna sound like I'm both pro and against things at the same time. I see a lack of a higher issue here, which is what has been called, when I went to school, it was called genius loci or place making, that there's no, there's no real rationale as to what makes this project a higher standard. And I know we've talked about that before a little bit. The issue I have, I mean, right now, you know, we've got a fairly comprehensive ordinance. And, you know, I, I think this, it's very true that we have to be very careful in how much more we add to it. And I was, it was really funny, because as I was Googling things today, or earlier this week, I came across an article here that actually talks about algorithms and how they can ruin lives. And a paragraph in it said, "The mistake is that we trust algorithms because we think of them as objective." And here, an algorithm is our ordinance. It's basically a set of rules. Whereas the reality is that humans craft those algorithms and can embed in them all sorts of biases and perspectives. You know, the, the algorithm operates every time, but yet, we actually end up with a building that formerly was Office Depot. So, all these ordinance were already here, and yet, we have that. And, you know, how, how do we resolve that with our, our current ordinances and things?
You know, the Office Depot, I don't know what's the specific year it was constructed, so it might be, it might be that, that might be a snapshot in time that said, oh my God, we better adopt these new ordinances. So, so those are, those are, those are frequently the, the elements is that generally, generally, communities evolve over time. You know, they, they might be a situation where Office Depot comes in and offers that building. And we think it's the greatest thing we've ever seen, and we're so grateful to have it, so let it go. Next thing you know is, you know, 10, 15 years later, you go, how did that ever happen?
Right.
That's what, that's, that's the lament of us planners, is that regardless of what was approved, you know, it was our fault in the, in the first place. So, so it's, you're, you're absolutely right. I think it's a situation where you also have to recognize that what we have in the HOC is something that we wanted to create. We wanted to establish it. It's very similar to this graphic that you have right here, a walkable, very compact urban environment. If you look at the mall, the mall was established in the 60s, 70s. At that, at the time, that was the high test development end, and that's what we wanted. And, you know, we have to balance, you, you really have to balance, what does the city want to achieve and have it appear like? Versus what is the commercial reality of, of those businesses that are coming into the community and how they operate? Downtowns, old traditional downtowns don't work because we don't have 1900 merchants anymore. We have 2014 contemporary retailers, which are more and more warehouse retail orientations. So, we have to balance that, and that's, that's just how, what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. We can look at the Home Depot or Office Depot and say, man, we, that's one against us.
Right.
And we can say, the next one, we're gonna get better.
Because you can, you have, you have that. All right.
Get through these.
Well, just, yeah. This one, all right, I mean, another thing that I had looked through was, was a discussion by Ed McMahon, not Johnny's partner, but actually a planner, who has very extensively written these days. One of his comments was that you really don't see what else can be done until you travel. Now, we've all talked, we all seem to be getting around a little more. This is actually in Oregon, and it's Walgreens. And while the architecture of this isn't applicable to Burnsville, there's still elements of the structure that appear to be in our ordinance, and yet, are not in the photo of the building that we just saw. For example, if you look right in the middle below where it says Walgreens, that parapet is extended out over the windows. And it basically creates shadow lines. It creates depth where the picture of the Walgreens that we looked at in the, in the guidelines basically was a flat wall again. And, you know, I'm continuing to see more and more of this seems to be an application of the ordinance versus problems with the specific elements of it. You know, and it comes, my always question comes back is, well, why can't we ask for that? Why, why haven't we said no, as you pointed out, you know? Where, where is our ability outside of the PUD to basically say, well, this building is nice, but it's no different than the one in the next city or five cities over? Or, Chris, if you could, well, yeah, if you could jump forward another one, the one on the left, on the right there. You know, this is right down the street from the same building that Walgreens in Oregon, and yet, it's a pretty typical, prototypical Taco Bell. And it is what it is, but I'm just saying that, you know, that could work for some stuff, but at what point do we say that this is not really right for Burnsville? And where is our ability to offer that advice and when? I think that's really the key, and that's, I think, what we're trying to discuss here is, when can we do that? The, the one on the, on the left, I thought, was unique in that it was a, it's hard to see because the picture's a little small. And then on the right of that, you see the, the older style building that Al was talking about. But buried in the background there is a new Chick-fil-A with a cow on the roof.
We don't allow cows?
No, we don't allow cows.
We got that going.
Yep. That was, no, actually not. That, that's in Alabama. Chris, can you change again? And, and I know we're picking on some of our established businesses and things, but little bit of detail for Home Depot changed the character of the building somewhat. The one on the right is in Duluth. Basically, it was just some stone. The one on the, on the left, again, a little difficult to see. I mean, I'd like to blow it up a little bit here. It's actually the freeway side of a Home Depot in Oregon. And if you look between the trees, which, that's Oregon, there is columns that are expressed on the outside of the building, even though it's the same precast structure. And there's a lacy metal detail that connects them horizontally. And it was just, it's just a little bit that may, that takes it away from being the, the flat precast building, which is, you know, it doesn't take much sometimes to have these things a little bit more detailed.
I think if we, if you like those features, moving away from one major material and requiring a percentage of material variation, and also, I think your parapet language, if you brought that away from the, just the parapet walls and brought that right into your, your visual accent, those, that, those things would stipulate, well, you know, we already stipulate for every 100 feet, you have to do something variation. But what is that? Maybe it's columns. Maybe it's a change of material. Maybe it's those things. And maybe those things need to be identified a little better.
Or not, or just required something to be submitted?
Well, right now, you have that.
But that's my, that was sort of what I keep coming back to, is it's in there now. And how do we achieve that? Chris, I think one more. This, this actually talks to the, this actually talks to the multiple materials. I mean, if you do that, obviously, the building on the right doesn't qualify. But yet, the Weisman Arts Museum, if it was to be built, would be acceptable.
Right now, they don't even allow metal panels.
Exactly, exactly. And that was why I selected this, is because it, it's so diametrically demonstrated how we have to be careful how much we try to put into these ordinances. Because you could leave, you could leave out a piece of sculpture like that, and quite honestly, you know, even the Ames Center, it's all glass. Not when you look at the building all the way around, everything else, but the perception when you look at it from this angle is that it's all glass. And yet, to me, it's a very well-done building. It looks very good. It fits the area very well. You know, it's one of the areas of, of part of the city where I feel like it turned out very well, and it creates a place. That was its job. You know, I mean, I, I've got a lot of little notes on the elements themselves. You know, I don't wanna bore everybody with going through them and that kind of stuff, but I just think that there's too many ways to achieve better design, and I don't know that we're gonna get it by simply adding detail to the current document. But I also don't know how to suggest where we should go with it. I'm at a loss for that right now.
Steve, whatever you have as far as notes, if you could compile those, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's amazing how little changes can help to make the building look so, as, as you said earlier, to make it sing, you know?
Yeah.
However, some of the, some of the businesses want to maintain their, their look, that throughout all their stores look the same, and they resist any suggestion from, to make minor changes.
I, I think Walmart, as you pointed out, but here, was a very good example.
Yes.
This one looks different than Apple Valley.
But they were willing to work with us. I remember when we were, when we were doing that one, they were willing, they were very open to suggestions.
Well, I think that's an opportunity there, because the next time somebody comes in, well, Walmart would, you know, we have that ability. I mean, I'm, yeah, let's see. You know, I, I don't mean this, I, I just see that we jumped right into, to building design, where to me, the site should have priority. I mean, I know that everybody tends to focus on the building, because that's really what you can see, but it does feel like that, that the site planning portion of it has to happen first. I mean, it's where you decide where to put it, and as you pointed out, if they're trying to bring a building in and drop it into a lot, that's what they're doing right then. I mean, even though they've already got a footprint, they're still trying to fit it into the, into the site. And I see that as more of an issue than, than the building, given our current ordinance and trying to make it work. I don't think, I, I don't have, can you go back to the other images?
From Al's?
Oh, actually, you know what? I did have one more set in there that I just wanted to throw at you real quick. And they're a little small again. The, the left one is obviously a mixed-use development, very similar to what we have Heart of the City. You can see the gray as tops of the buildings. You can see all the integrated parking. It's gonna look very similar, I think, to what Heart of the City will in a, in an aerial once it's complete. Right now, it's not. The difference that I wanted to show here was what I saw, and keep in mind, these are all gonna be my opinions, very clearly. On the right side picture, on the right side, this is what's arguably the main entrance into that, that mixed-use area. The, that's a stair area that basically is the common space that we talked about. It's lit at night with LED lights under the stairs, and there's a, you know, they were just putting up a Christmas tree when I left right after Thanksgiving, and, you know, it's a very common area like that. If we go to CVS, if you could, back in, in, in these documents?
Yep, let me jump.
Okay.
Jump seats here.
That's one that prob, that, if you can, yeah, I mean, that was actually a good picture of it.
Okay, we can leave it right there.
This is the view pretty much from the intersection of Nicollet. And to me, the character of that common space isn't welcoming at all, yet it's the entry corner of Heart of the City as you come into it from Nicollet and Parkway. And, you know, I, I look at it as a lost opportunity, but, you know, basically, the, the direction, you know, they, they probably met the detail, that, you know, they ticked off the marks. They said, oh, it's a common space. It's got seating. It's got landscaping. It's got some nice railings. You know, they ticked them all off, but yet, it's not as successful. And this is gonna be the hardest part of this, because like Jim has said before too, you know, we can't, we can't be telling people at this point, well, you gotta go back to the drawing board. That's not fair to them, and obviously, it drives the process out, and that's, that's not what we're looking for here. But yet, where are we gonna be able to see what is arguably, you know, better design earlier on? You know, there's our Walgreens again with the flat. You know, we, we go over to Porta Creek, and I'm sure every, all of us have probably looked at it, if not walked through there. And, you know, the sense of place as you, as you walk through that is pretty impressive.
That is true. The one thing I caution you is that Porta Place, when they're, when they're, when they're looking, what they're trying to do is they're trying to create that environment for their customers, bring them in. CVS is focused on retail sales and convenience. So, so those, those different components, that when I, when I, when I keep, I keep coming back, I don't, I don't wanna discourage anyone from, from establishing standards that reflect what the city wants to achieve. But each use is going to be designed with the intent of what my, and best benefits me. And so, well, CVS does. And so, while CVS does, uh, does not have the same, uh, uh, metal roof line that you see in Oregon, you know, it's pretty, uh, standard building design, I agree.
Well, in, in the CVS, you know, a lot went on to get that here in the first place. So I'm, I'm going to try and stay away from that specifically because, number one, we can't do anything about it. Number two, it's, it really doesn't matter. But in going forward, something like this, you know, it's going to PUD, it's a focal point. You know, directing their, their efforts more successfully, I think, is what I'm trying to talk to. What you talked about too with their convenience and I, I'm sorry, what else did you talk about with, with the CVS and their?
CVS retail sales and convenience.
Can, can you go to a picture here that shows CVS from Nicollet? Chris?
I will. Am I at the end here?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I think it's up front.
Yeah, I think.
Let me just jump.
Go back for the way.
Oh, back?
Yeah, keep going back.
Back to the front.
Back to the front.
That's a good one.
Might be one, one more. Nope, same.
Yeah, generally the same. Um, this is good. Well, no, this is that same one. Yeah, this one, this one's good. Um, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to set aside the site considerations that drove us to this. But, you know, the fact that those windows are signs, you know, to me, it, it would go again, I mean, if, if somebody else was to come in with a lot that wasn't, that didn't have the site considerations of this and wanted to put in fake windows, I feel like that should be a, a flag to us right at the bat that something else is going on, that we, we've got to look for something more. You know, this one, you know, the same point with Jared's where it looked like somebody said, there's too much blank wall there. You gotta do something with it. And we're going to cut in some windows.
Well, let me challenge you on this. The, the photographs, I'm not sure what they're, if they're reflective of local history or, but they're not, they're not advertising product. If it was, if it wasn't those photographs, but it was some other type of art, public art, whatever, sculpture, whatever, would it be as offensive or is it just perceived as not being true windows?
No, it's, to me, that one in particular, again, because of where it's at. The issue is it doesn't engage the pedestrians. There's no activity in the building. There's no increased, uh, increased activity that's going to help drive retail in what is supposed to be a retail corridor at ground level. And again, it, it's a function of the, the topography here and how they chose to address it. But that particular building is blank on that wall from that standpoint. And to a, to a lesser degree, so is the apartments across the street. You know, it's, it's, you know, it, it's a criticism of how it ended up, but it's also an observation of how do we try to change it going forward a little bit, you know? I mean, we, there's, there's more.
I face this again, is when, when you have your choice of putting your, your entryway toward your parking versus the, the public, the public right of way. Everyone's going to go to their parking because, you know, where it's going to come in. So what do we do with the other sides of the buildings? So I think these are all good comments, but those are the challenges you face is that when you're, when you're, when you're setting up your business, failure, the fail, the failure that I, that we face is so frequently is that re, current retailers, parking to their entry is the most important component that they're thinking about.
And the issue right now is.
In and out.
And the issue right now is we can't offer anything on Nicollet.
Yeah.
And that's where it should be, just like a typical mainstream would be, mainstream.
Commissioner Cody?
I've just been sitting here listening to this. This is more of a 10,000-foot observation. And with my bias, which will be a fly in this whole ointment, I'm sure. But what I'm hearing, and this is as a general observation, is I'm hearing everybody wanting to try to create some idyllic Aspen Village, basically. And the reality is the practicality of a suburb in the Minnesota River Valley sort of needs to be grasps, you know? We're not Oregon. We're not Aspen. You know, we, like you said, I think you were right on that. You know, the retailers want functionality of parking lot into the front of my building so that I have business, so I stay in business, so I can stay in Burnsville. And I think, you know, my theory is we have to really keep that in mind.
I'd like to concur. I, I've, you know, listened to all the conversations. And I, I have a, I, for many years ran a retail operation. And one of my concerns, and I get where we're coming from. I understand that we may not necessarily want another building that's at 35E and 42 that is quite, quite honestly, very, very plain. And how does that happen at the exact same time that the, roughly, the, the building was built a little earlier than the Walmart, but not a, not, not a 10-year span? And the Walmart that we got was pretty identical to the one in Lakefield that was built about the same time. So I, I truly believe Walmart, that's what they were doing at the time. I'm concerned about, um, a couple of things. I, I've run retail establishments where if, if we, if we run the risk of overpricing the building and i, i, if a retailer is going to spend $6 million building a building in one community and they're going to have to spend $8 million building it in another community, and that's probably an exaggeration. Down the road, the, the tenant rent on that, and, and the next time we have a little dip in the economy, I can tell you which one that big, that big company is going to close. Which one is, are they going to shutter first to, to, to move away from that? And, and that's a concern. And there's got to be a happy medium as to how we do some of this stuff. Because we have an example of Porter Creek clear at one end that we cannot in any way, shape or form govern to. We can't, we can't get to that standard. But we also don't necessarily want the, the, the blank painted tilt-up concrete that has no reveal to it or nothing. I'm also concerned long-term about specific things like bicycle racks and awnings and, and plantings. I also ran a retail environment where the, how the landscaping is maintained is due to whoever's running the building at the time. And, uh, awnings need to be replaced. And, and I guess if we were going to do something, I would be a little more of, of the thought process of what can we do to the building? And I'm not saying get rid of landscaping, but in the example of the Walgreens where the landscaping is, maybe if we would have had something in our plan that would have required a little different relief closer to the bottom to give that building some, some variance. And then when the landscaping dies, we still have some sort of uniqueness to the, to the building. So the, the whole conversation, I, I don't have an answer either. I, I probably take a little at the, uh, at the other end of the continuum more with John from the standpoint of we've got to step back and what exactly are we asking for? How do we not overprice ourselves? How do we not be business-friendly? The application that came to us for the Starbucks, I was, there was a piece in there about landscaping around the building. And I think it's, we're at 50%.
Correct, Commissioners.
And as we, and I made the comment in the meeting, as we looked at the plot there, we, there was outdoor seating which took away landscaping. And there was, how does the, the drive-up and how do you get to the front door? And how do you service that property from the backside from deliveries? That doesn't leave you 50% of the building to, to, to landscape. And I would rather say, let's not necessarily reduce our landscaping, but let's, here's the landscaping percentage, but it doesn't have to be right next to. Give the applicant the ability, if they want to go out and put the landscaping in the middle of the parking lot or whatever is going to work for them versus, in some cases, our ordinance are, in my opinion, too discouraging from a standpoint of, of what's going to happen in, to our chair's point. There's a lot of people that, there's a lot of businesses that want to build in Burnsville. And we want them here as residents. Um, and there's a plan of what they're building and what they're putting in other communities. And we, can we play with that? Absolutely. But I think we've got to be careful of not going, going overboard.
Now, we have to remember that, uh, what Alan has said, uh, our standards are high in Burnsville. We are way above other. It does not mean that we should not look at improving. It's a continuing process that, you know, today we're talking about this. Next year, this time we sit down, we would have ideas that, hey, what we agreed upon last year, we, we need to change a little. And, uh, my feeling is, once you give staff the flexibility, or give all of us, because staff recommend to the planning commission and the planning commission make recommendations to the, to the city council. Again, planning commission members change. Who, who are here to, today, next year, I don't know how many of us would be here. And we bring in new ideas. And that's what I, I think helps any city to grow. By grow, I, growing, I mean to improve our buildings, make it more habitable for our citizens, make it a place that we all want to, where we want to live. Because of the various, um, the diversity that we enjoy, not only in the population, the services, but in our buildings. And I'm, I strongly feel that we need to give ourselves the opportunity to change and to improve.
And then one before that I forgot.
Go ahead.
I, I, and you, you had mentioned, I mentioned in, in the council member, or the work session, we, we absolutely have to give these people the answers to the test before they come to us. We can't get in a situation where they come to the planning commission and one of us raises our hand and says, I'd like a different color on the front of the building. We, 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 we absolutely cannot do that from a standpoint of what that developer is going to try to plan for. We have to give, whatever we come up with, they have to absolutely know all of the answers to the test. And then if they do sit in front of us with a PUD or whatever it may be, then we do what we do. We do a little bit of give and take and if you're going to, and we come up with a, we come up with a solution. But we can't come up with anything new, uh, for them when they're in front of this body. That's just not fair.
The balance, the balance you have is the applicant. I'm going to sound like I never went to planning school. The applicant's coming to invest in your community. He's spending money. He's creating growth. He's creating jobs. He's creating investment. And, you know, generally they'll have professionals working for them that will say, what, what do you want to achieve here? And us as planners have to recognize that that investment is going to be good for the community and we need to guide it in a manner that achieves our goals, but does not necessarily say, that's an ugly building, go away. So that, that's one of the cautions. I think over the, over time, your staff listens to what you do, how you react to each, each and every application. That becomes historic record for us. And we say, if it didn't work last time, we're not going to put that in front of them again. So we advise that, the next applicant differently. So each time you review something, there becomes a record of what you liked and what you didn't like about a project. And we try to take that into account. The, the items that I looked at and offered, I don't think are necessarily, uh, difficult or additional cost of development. You have your major materials. You have this laundry list of materials. And we say, we would like some variation in how you apply those, not 100% so we don't get one wall of tip-up concrete all looking the same. That should not dramatically increase the cost of that building construction. If we look at, uh, the, the vertical or horizontal relief components and say, every 100 feet, we want more than just a change in color. We would like a column. We would like to add variation of material. Those things are things that can be incorporated and have been incorporated in a lot of different communities and done that. We can do those things without really driving the cost of new construction up. The other elements that.
Alan, before you move on, but don't we have that ability right now to do that?
Right now, your ordinance does not, you have, you have language in the parapet wall that, that, so if the, the wall goes above the roof, you can have specific provisions. But if it's, if it's just a, suppose it's a hip roof and you have 100 feet, the only visual stipulation is, is that it change color, texture, not necessarily material or column. In your, in your, uh, Heart of the City, you stipulate for every certain distance that you have to have some actual variation in the wall depth. You don't have that in your general provisions. Those things could be brought forward into the general provisions without a lot of difficulty.
Except that there's a building right on, uh, just, just east of 42 and 13 in Savage, where it, it's a office building. It's two stories tall. It has strongly battered sidewalls on it and a hip roof. And there's no way I'd ask him to change colors or, or slope or textures in the middle of that. It's, it's, the, the building is, is composed just like that and it looks very well like that. So if, if he's coming in and saying, well, I have to change this, you know, are we getting off track?
Are we, are we over-managing it?
Yeah, exactly. And, and you, you know, you know, John, you saw how quickly I got focused on the detail. And I think we, we get that a lot here. I think that there's less opportunity right now for us to look bigger picture at the whole thing. You know, I mean, we see the site that's, that's the, there's the lot. We don't really see how it affects the neighborhood. But yet, we have to address that. It's more than just looking at the lot, at the, the building on the lot and saying, well, it all works in there and everything's fine. How does it affect the bigger neighborhood too? And I, I'd like to see more of that. You know, how does, you know, what, what else is it going to change down the street, you know?
I think the problem is we're, in a sense, we're trying to define art and there is.
No. But that's.
There's seven subjective opinions.
Isn't it good that there are five?
I don't have, and I don't have a problem with it.
Right.
To me, it's, to me, what we're, and I, I agree with that. I think there should be five. To me, we're trying, to me, we're trying to get almost, we're going more towards that every wall is going to be a tan and it's going to look like this because we're going to have these rigid little things.
No, that's what, uh, what, uh, Commissioner Benke's saying, you know? We should have the ability to, rather than one wall, a concrete wall with white, you know?
No, but it, but then the problem you come into is we should have five different things until that one over there, I think, is way too ugly to be in this picture. So now we have to remove that.
And it is a very subjective.
That's the problem.
It's an extremely subjective process.
Different Commissioners see different, like different things.
Go back to, um, like, this one right here, the, this, this white wall industrial building. For its use and purpose, that construction works for him.
And when that was built, that was probably a huge upgrade from some mention was concrete block.
Wells, Wells Concrete did those and that was their, that was their bread and butter was that double T panel. But thing is, is when that got built, we were also getting Strom Industrial Park, which is 11 feet tall, concrete blocks, split face block. I mean, this was an upgrade to that by far.
And each, each time we evolve, we want a little bit more.
Right.
We really, somehow, what, what got us there is bad now. This, this white building, the, the landscaping around that building is actually very, very good.
You're right. And it does soften it. And this, this picture doesn't do it justice. You're right. But it, it does, it is an example, good example for what we were after there. I, I am thinking that, that the, you know, trying to drive the quality up is going to address your issue. And while we're not edina, you know darn well that you get higher dollars per square foot in edina. So therefore, if our design is stronger and our buildings are more expensive, it will slowly evolve into a better quality building.
It may be a situation where we, we don't have to do much with our code. But maybe it's a situation where, from the planning commission's standpoint, let's look at some of our, our, what, what, what you perceive as mistakes and tell us where we made the mistakes. And then when staff reviews them and the, the next application coming through, you just, you just don't duplicate it.
The first word I wrote down after you, you started showing us was implementation. Because I saw things that weren't, that appeared to be in what you were talking about, but the pictures didn't have it.
A couple of things that I, I, I try not to, sure. A couple of things that I, I try not to, professionals that are working for the applicant, I, I avoid insulting them, because I may have to work with them again and may want, you know, and they, they're, so the circumstances are, is that as we move through it, if we can have some defined goals or some defined issues and those type of things, that might be the extent of implementation. Your ordinances are very, very extensive. And as, as reflected in my discussion point, if I got six, you have seventy-three pages, I only got six discussion points, that's, I, there's a lot of times where you don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if I can just bring up two, two things, find the right image first. So I think getting to Al's point and many of the points we brought up, all of the, all the standards, all the requirements, I think, to get Walgreens up from a C or C minus up to an A building are there. Obviously, we've, we've learned from our mistakes and things like that, but again, things could've been tweaked for this, whether it be site design, landscaping, very cost-effective things that wouldn't have changed the end construction dollar figure by much, could've made a, a big difference.
Chris, I mean, one thing right off the bat here is more relief.
Yes.
Definitely. I mean, that simple change would've made a lot of difference right off the bat.
Yep. And, and again, this, it's difficult to see here, but, you know, that, that green space between the building and the sidewalk, and where the parking's placed, and some other details, and I think those are conversations, staff's intent is, those are conversations we'll have early on with the applicant, pass along where we think the Planning Commission is coming from, and again, not necessarily a number of ordinance amendments, but just tweaking and discussing what we have. The other thing I wanted to bring up real quick, because it was on your work plan for 2014, was the building perimeter landscaping, and the fifty percent. Staff did some research on that prior to, this is interesting because, because both Starbucks and Chick-fil-A had the same deviation. Prior to that, in the last three years, there were only two requests to deviate from that fifty percent building perimeter. And I, I found that interesting because it seemed like there would've been a lot more. There, there were two, and then it happened to be both Chick-fil-A and Starbucks each had a deviation. To Jim's point, if we would've counted the side, the patio seating, I know Chick-fil-A would've met the requirements, and Starbucks may have two. So on the same vein, I think those are not necessarily something we need to address by ordinance, but in a deviation, I can surely give you the calculation, what is right around the building perimeter, what's around the building perimeter plus outdoor seating, or plus this, or plus that, and just give you an idea of what those, those numbers are. Typically, unless you're changing, unless you're handing out five or more variances or deviations for one specific thing each year, maybe it's not a problem, maybe we don't need to change the ordinance, we just need to adjust how we look at it, how that information's conveyed.
Well, from the planting, I, I was talking to Commissioner Benkey about this before the meeting, I think Costco did a wonderful job of the outlots and the, what they did and how they softened it, and I, and I, the east side of that building probably has vegetation on it between that and Burnhaven, but there, there's no plantings to the north, and there's no plantings to the west and to the south.
South is the parking lot.
You know, and so there's an example where I believe they did an excellent job landscaping the entire property. But we, you know, we may or may not have this thing that says, "You've gotta have X amount around the building," and I guess that's my point, is I think there's, there's gotta be some flexibility there, and I'm not saying that we need to limit or bring down what we're requiring for vegetation. I think we need to give them some, some flexibility and put it where it works for them as a, as a building owner and as a, as a retailer.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think Target has, was similarly successful with the renovation.
Where we went very...
The aisle right up the middle, it clearly brings you to the entrance, it's a fairly safe place to walk if you can get to it through the snow.
One element of Target and just green space in general, too, is it's more than just how it looks. It's also, the city has to deal with impervious surface, we have to deal with the amount of water that drains in the Minnesota River and the quality, and so there's a lot of retrofits and things that are stormwater, you know, related to, and Target was, was one of them.
There's a fairly significant...
We're able to get some, some good things.
There's a fairly significant underground reservoir there, isn't there?
Yep, exactly.
And there's a significant one at Costco, too.
Yeah. But then, going back to Costco, it goes to your point on site design. From a traffic perspective, it's very difficult. It looks great, so where do you start and stop?
Well, but it calms, I mean, it definitely calms traffic. You know, the fact that it's hard to get around in there somewhat slows you down a little bit.
True.
It slows traffic, it doesn't...
Chris, do you believe we've helped at all, or...
I think so. I think, I think this was a very, very good conversation. I'd like to, for time purposes, maybe try to wrap it up, but I think this was...
Could I ask just a couple of questions? In looking at page three of your report, are there any of those items that you would like to at least have some consideration of? And then on page three, and then on site design, are there anything on page thirty-five that you find appealing, or...
Well, I think, well, go ahead.
Well, I think all of Alan's suggestions have merit, I really do. To bring them back in a more refined form, and then we can decide how we want to proceed.
And it may be a situation where we don't make it as an ordinance, we make it as, choose, here's some options for you.
Options, yeah.
With the visual relief, it might be, we might say, you know, here, you need to break up the building wall, but here's some options, you know?
I would definitely suggest focusing on two and three.
Okay.
I think the other sort of feeling I got when we were talking to the council was that I, to a degree, this should be pretty much citywide, I mean, outside of residential, obviously. But I did feel like they were after, you know, not necessarily expanding the design standards that we got rid of at Heart of the City, but yet sort of made it more holistic over the whole city.
I would caution, you know, again, I think industrial buildings have, when we set up an industrial park, we set up isolation, we set up function, we set up that. The commercial stuff, I certainly agree with you on that.
I, I agree, and I, and I would argue that it has significantly less need for it.
Yeah.
It's just back to site planning and maybe landscaping, which, which we already have.
Yeah, you have plenty of landscaping.
Yeah.
To, to your point about, and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna take much longer, so, good, bad, or indifferent, and I don't know if, if the, if the two properties are owned by a different franchise, but I think a good example of, I'm still perplexed how something can look differently, the, the brand-new Holiday Station store at, at thirteen in Nicolet has a very nice, and it's very stereotypical of what they've been building in the city from the standpoint of a brick facade around the entrance.
The stone.
Brick, the stone around the posts. Now, not to take away from that, the, the renovation of the one on forty-two is substantially better than what was there before, but if you look at the two buildings, there's a marked difference in the detail and what they did to the building, and the amount of stone that was used, and the amount of brick. And, and so that's where I kinda get dizzy and fall down here sometimes, is how do we get through, we, we have one, which I think is an excellent example, and one which is far better than it was, but it, it's not, it's not like the other one.
I got a question, and there is no right answer. Would you like them to be the same?
I, I don't want them to look the same. I guess what I'm saying is, there was, there's just far more variance and far more difference from one to the other.
I, I asked a leading question because it, it becomes a perception of what's the value of what was done at Nicolet thirteen versus what was the value here. It's a, it's totally subjective.
But also to that, just to that point, one we dealt with, one was full redevelopment. So we had, they needed a conditional use permit, we had more triggers, we had more carrots. The, the Irving in forty-two, therefore, everybody's first choice was, was full redevelopment. On that one, it was a re, a remodel, if you will, straight to permit, they had their land use approvals. In that situation, they had to, they had to satisfy our requirements, our minimum requirements, they were looking to move ahead rather than something we had, we had the ability to do more trading on.
And I, I do stand corrected. I do know, originally, when it went in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council, the new building, I think, was closer to the one at thirteen in Nicolet, but then they ran into some land issues with Cub, and then so they ended up staying in their footprint. And so, I don't wanna take anything away from them, I think they...
They wanted to do the car wash.
They dramatically improved the facility, but there's a couple of examples of how a PUD and how that worked, and, and where it may or may not have worked, so. I won't say anything else. Thanks.
It's a good point.
I think, are we about to wrap up on this, or...
Al, unless you need anything else?
I'm good.
You see any value with those two articles that I emailed you also, for, for the council, for the Planning Commission?
Yes. Yep, I can distribute those, I just didn't...
Yeah, that's fine. I wanted you to read them, it's, they're two articles by this Edward McMahon again, and I, I'm at a loss because I haven't found anybody else that sort of addresses these things, otherwise I'd try to make it a little bit more broad-based with my comments, but he talks about, he talks about some of this stuff, too, in a more general sense.
Steve, do you have specific notes on yours?
Yeah, I will.
I would really appreciate that.
No, I will.
Thank you, Commissioners, staff, for the discussion on this matter, architectural guidelines, and I hope that we've been helpful to you, Alan, and Chris, and Deb. So what's, what's the next move?
Next move, we'll, we'll regroup as staff, go through notes and what we got out of this, and bring something, bring some of them back to you in January.
Great. Look forward to that. Thank you. Commissioners, the next item, item five, updates. Any updates? Staff?
We'll see you January twelfth, twenty fifteen.
Just to mention, thank you, that Commissioner Ben Teheri has resigned from the Planning Commission. We want, on behalf of the Planning Commission, to thank him for his services. He brought a lot of experience as an architect, and his, his work here is much appreciated. Ben, we wish you all the best. Before we get to adjournment, just wanted to thank Commissioners and staff for tonight. Those who have been listening and viewing us, or listening and viewing audience, we thank you. As you see, we work very hard to make Burnsville the blessed place to live, to work, to have your business, and to shop. Happy holidays to Commissioners, staff, and all the best for the New Year. Happy New Year, happy holidays. Motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Torrey, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and good night.